It is six o'clock. We call the meeting order and we do have a quorum present. And we got two more in the kitchen coming this way.
So, we wanted to start tonight, council, with to revisit the options on your geo bond project. You have on your regular agenda, three different ordinances that lay out the propositions in three different ways. So, let me first just flip through what we've got. So, we'll start with the blue ribbon recommendation. This is what came out of your committee at a total of 117.7 million. At the bottom of this chart, you see the impact that would have on your tax rate, your debt rate, 1.3 cent. And then if you look on the right, you'll see revised numbers. So, this revised number occurred after you gave us a new direction that you wanted to look more carefully at the recreation center option. We did some tours of various centers. You did like the Grapevine Center. We went back, we did research, and we revised that number to 25.1 million. That's the multi-generational concept for the recreation center. So, that totals to 122 million, and the impact on your debt rate is the 1.4 cent. As we looked at the Grapevine Center and as well the Flower Mount Center, one thing that both of them offered was an aquatic facility. And so, there were questions asked about whether or not we should include that same type of option. So, we went back and we looked at the cost related to that. That is an additional 13 million. So, that would raise your total bond program to a $135 million total program. It has a 1.8 cent impact on your tax rate, your debt rate. So, again, here are the two options side by side, the 1.4 cent versus the 1.8 cent, the difference there being your aquatic center. One thing to point out is when we talk about impact on the tax rate, that is all based on assumptions. And it's based on, one, a very conservative assumption related to your ad valorem growth. So, we have assumed a 3% growth over 10 years. What we've seen over the last 10 years is actually 4.14%. So, again, this is a very conservative option or analysis. So, if we see the same type of growth that we've seen historically, you could do these options and really see no impact on your tax rate, but we don't know. So, again, we like to be very conservative in what we tell you. One thing you had asked at our last meeting was whether or not we could make the aquatic center contingent on the passage of the multi-generational rec center. Julie actually reached out, first to the attorney, where's Julie?
Here I am.
To the Attorney General's office, and then she was redirected to the Secretary of State's office. And Julie, I'll let you talk about that one a little bit.
Sure. It's highly unusual for the AG to defer to the Secretary of State, but they did. So, I talked to attorney at the Secretary of State's office and kind of spelled out the scenario, didn't say the city, but spelled out the scenario of what we were looking at. And she said, "In no uncertain terms, no, they do not believe it is authorized that you can have a contingent proposition," meaning one proposition becomes effective only if the other one passes. They believe that to be coercive, and much like a dual proposition not allowed because you're essentially forcing someone to vote for something they don't want in order to get something that they do. So, that's kind of the answer on that question, unfortunately.
So, any questions of Julie on that particular issue? So, the ordinance options that we had included for you obviously don't have anything as contingent.
Sure.
So, you have, as I said earlier, three different options for your bond ordinance. One does not include the aquatics facility. The second one includes the aquatics facility as part of the parks and recreation proposition. And then the third one is a standalone proposition. So, you would have four propositions on your ballot with the third being the aquatic. So, because it can't be contingent, what could happen is your park and recreation could fail, your aquatics could pass, and with 13 million, you really couldn't do a whole lot with a standalone aquatics facility. That's what that would leave you with. Remember, just because it passes a bond election does not mean you have to expend the money. So, if that were to happen, then you could just not issue the debt. A couple of other things I wanted to talk about in relation to an aquatics facility, just making sure you have all the information to consider this issue, is the cost of operating an issue, or actually, operating an aquatics facility. When we talked to Grapevine, they told us that it cost around, they said 900,000 to operate the facility all year round. But we stepped back and we said, "Well, what does it take today to operate our two aquatics facilities that are open for 13 weeks just in the summer months?" It costs 512,860 annually. We bring in about 200,000 in revenue offset. So, we did some projections to a full year, and I will tell you, this is very, very conservative. And we were looking at just doubling what we bring in currently with the two outdoor aquatic facilities. So, 625,000 is the number that we came up with. I think that's a pretty conservative number. Also, I think probably you'll actually generate more revenue than that, too. But again, these are all unknowns. But again, operating an aquatics facility year-round, an indoor aquatics facility, is going to be an expensive proposition, and that's going to hit, obviously, your operating budget.
I have a question. So, the additional revenue that the existing water parks bring in is because they have an admission fee specific to that facility. The aquatic center integrated into a, you know, family-type center, would that have its own fees?
We have a membership fee. It's going to have whatever fees you guys set, you know? We can look at different scenarios.
Practically speaking.
Practically speaking, most of the cities, what I see them doing is they have a membership fee, that people become members of the center. Now, that doesn't mean that you couldn't have some kind of separate fee just for the aquatic center. We'd have to work through those issues.
So, if there, and I think it does, like, for example, what Grapevine had as a membership structure and Flower Mount. And so, if you don't have, if you don't create a separate fee for the aquatic center and it's part of the full center fees, how can you actually quantify what the aquatics will generate in additional revenue?
That's some of the problems we had working with Grapevine, trying to figure that out. I mean, that is difficult. It's difficult to know how many people become members because you have an aquatic center that wouldn't become members if it was just a rec center. Those are questions I can't really answer. I don't know. But I'm going to guess that having an aquatic center does drive your membership up.
So, what would you do to divide, just do a certain percentage split and say, "This is the membership fee that we're getting, and we're going to take 30% of that, put it towards the aquatic operation."
I mean, from an operational standpoint, I really wouldn't do that. I mean, unless you wanted me to analyze really what percentage of cost we were covering. Normally, we would just, that money would come in, if this is all general fund, it would come into the general fund, and we would do it as a center, you know, in comparison to the center as a whole. Now, if you wanted me to try to analyze it separately, we would have to split your fee structure in such a way that we're collecting that revenue separately so that we could do that calculation. And some cities have a business plan, and that might be something we would want to do, where we had a business plan, and we would write it in such a way that those fees can be looked at separately and compared separately. Certainly, we can look at the cost of running it very easily separately. You know, I know we have challenges right now hiring lifeguards just for the summer season. I'm going to guess it's very challenging when you start hiring lifeguards year-round. I don't know about the conversations you've had with any of the centers, but I would guess that that could be very challenging.
What some of the cities are doing, because of the part-time challenges, cities will go in together and hire lifeguards, and they split 19 hours in one pool and maybe 10 hours in another pool. So, they're working part-time, but you have to balance their schedules back and forth, and you still are able locally to stay within your part-time requirements. But it does get to be a challenge to keep them stable.
Now, one thing you can look at when you look at these centers, I mean, the centers you have today, is what percentage recovery do you want to achieve? Now, is the goal of the center to make it available to as many people in your community as possible, or is the goal of the center to recover a certain percentage of cost? And those are the goals that we want to sit down and talk about with the council.
So, as far as the operation of this indoor pool, do you have some idea of what it would cost to operate it as opposed to the outdoor pools that we have? You said it would be quite expensive, but do you have some figure besides the $13 million cost that wants it's up and going?
13 million is just obviously your capital side. So, that's really what we did in this analysis. So, I mean, we know we operate the pools for 13 weeks for $512,000. And so, we projected if we were to operate on a conservative basis all year round, based on whatever hours, you know, we determine or we set would be, at least double that, and probably actually be more than double that. So, this is a pretty conservative analysis. So, instead of just running 13.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one problem you run into is because it's seasonal, when you only run it for 13 weeks, your employees get a seasonal exemption from overtime and from healthcare, where you have to actually start paying for healthcare. When you start running it year-round, that seasonal exemption goes away. So, we have to maintain hours at a certain level, no more than.
20 hours a week is what we keep.
No more than 20 hours a week. So, now, that really drives having to have more lifeguards. So, there's certainly ways to operate it, to operate it as efficiently and keep the cost down as much as possible, but it's not cheap to run a year-round facility such as this.
What, I know we got the numbers thrown at us, but I don't recall them. What were the cost recoveries that Flower Mount and Grapevine were looking at, their facilities?
When I say Grapevine told us it was 80% cost recovery?
85% on the red portion, but the senior center portion, they didn't.
They didn't.
How that Grapevine didn't even.
But the red included the water.
Yeah, I don't think they did. And that seems really high to me.
80% seems high to me, but that's inclusive of the water.
We've tried to get a copy of their business plan, and we don't have it yet.
We don't have it yet, though we're interested if they have.
And Flower Mount was in the 50s, 53?
I want to say 40%.
I'm not sure.
A lot of cities don't really set that as a goal, you know?
Sure.
I mean, Keller, I think, is one of the cities that has a pretty high recovery rate. And you have to kind of step back and look at your community. You know, some communities have a higher level of income, and certainly, the expectation is that they pay a higher cost than perhaps other communities. So, I think that's a community-by-community basis, based on your community profile.
So, Grapevine, they do have an aquatic wet family fee and an aquatic wet individual that's separate from their annual pass.
So, they're. Do they control access? Do you have to show a second pass to get into that area?
I'm sure it's a different pass.
When they swipe their card going in, just like ours does now, it tells what their access level is.
Yeah, there's one certainly to do it, I'm sure, but, I mean, just know that the number's fairly large, and.
It's spelt what I thought it would be.
It's significant. So, that's just a decision in, so what happens? So, if you fund this via your geo bond election, your general fund's going to pick up that cost. So, that's just an additional impact that you have to be prepared for when you open that center.
And so, that 625 would be just a little bit less than 1 cent a year on sales, on property taxes.
That's correct.
If we are to look at a 10-year bond of under 2 cents.
For all the capital.
For all the capital. So, we're talking, we're talking like half of what we're doing for a bond program.
When you go back on, like, the other slide, I think it's about.
It'll take maybe a year to operate it.
It's on the next.
It was about 0.4 that it made difference. So, this is about 1.4 a year due to the, which if the citizens want that and they're willing to do it.
But as it's going to be presented on the ballot, right now, if we were to itemize it out as an individual, they're not going to even know what is, what impact that's going to have to them.
That's my concern as well.
I know y'all getting involved in the operations and all that stuff. We don't do the same thing when we do a regular park. Do we? We've never had that discussion.
It would never be this substantial.
I imagine it's fairly substantial.
Not to increase our tax rate 1 cent.
We're not, we're not increasing the tax rate 1 cent.
Well, that's what you just asked, wasn't it?
They said it would.
It's the equivalent.
It would be the equivalent of 750,000. But I don't understand why we're concerned about the operating cost, not as it costs still, but we don't concern ourselves with it when we build a hundred-some-odd acre railroad park.
I wasn't on the council then.
We did inform the council at the time. We did inform you.
No doubt, but it wasn't a concern of the council. And any other deal that we've done, there hadn't been a concern of it. What does it cost us to operate MCL? That was never brought up either. I mean, it wasn't ever discussed. It was a cost that's there, and there are costs that go with it no matter where you're operating.
Those numbers were presented.
I have no doubt. I don't remember they went through every little detail that the breakout of this little deal will be this, and we've got the full-time equivalency of lifeguards. That wouldn't ever discuss anything like that.
No, I don't think there are any lifeguards at the MCL.
There's full-time employees that get health benefits.
For one element, one element we have here that we have with the MCL that's kind of a parallel, with the MCL, you rent a space and a cost. You know what that expense is for that space and who rented it for how much. So, you can really define your cost and your cost recovery almost to the penny. With this facility, if you don't control access to the aquatics, you can't really ever know what your cost recovery is.
I think they are controlling the access.
I think there's a way to get to that.
And that, well, and that's my point, is that if you don't, then you can't.
I think there is a control there, and they were, it's been talked about having two different fees.
Yeah, and that's.
We can do that.
And in Grapevine, they didn't charge anything for the seniors, just remember that. Nothing. The meals, the car tables, the drama area, the all the other stuff, they had no fee at all.
They had a separate area for drama?
They had a stage up there.
They had a stage.
It's like a council work room. It's the same thing.
My concern is that when this goes to the public, that we're talking about $13 million, but they have no idea, in the bond language that we have, that it's pretty substantial to operate this on top of the 13 million.
My answer to that would.
Different than what it takes to operate an outdoor pool for 13 weeks.
On any of the, on any of the other things we're doing, are we saying what the operating cost for it? An answer is no. The rec center's going to cost something to operate.
But we have an idea what it's going, the public has an idea what it's going to cost. They've been through it before. They haven't been through an inside aquatic center.
Right, but we've been, we've been through the rec center, and we're not putting it out there. We didn't put it out there what the roads are going to cost us. We haven't put out what the additional.
We haven't put out what the road's going to cost?
Not the operating.
The maintenance.
The maintenance and everything. We're not putting that out there. It's going to be rebuilt in a few years, just like the pool at. Do we need to put that out there?
Well, I think.
I feel like.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I think this is substantial, and this is more so than the railroad street park, 250 acre park. This is something that we need to look at.
And we have to do. This you don't have to.
I think we're down to right now, we either do it or we don't do it. Because I don't know what you look at anymore.
No, I've got the data I need.
If you're going to, if you want to take that away from the voters, then take it away from the voter. That, the whole deal is if the voters want to build something, there's an assumption of an operating cost, no matter what you do. Maybe high, maybe low, but there is an assumption of an operating cost.
And remember, there is an option for you on the proposition that would carve out the aquatic center and it would stand alone.
Right.
So, that would, that would, that would make it very clear for the voters if they want the aquatic center to vote for. You just have that.
And the other option is not to have it at all. That's an option.
Just one other issue I wanted to make you aware of. So, we went back and we looked at the 4B fund. And so, and remember the 4B fund, it's sales tax. And always start any conversation about sales tax with the discussion that it is a volatile revenue source. But if we look at your current fund, your 4B fund, revenue to expenditures, you've got about a $700,000 difference, revenues higher. So, we stepped back, when we talked to the 4B committee, we said, "You can, you can issue debt again in 2025." Right now, you have that $700,000 cushion right now. So, we asked, we went back to our, the first Southwest, and we said, "Based on that scenario, when could we again, based on that 700,000, when could we again issue additional debt and how much?" And the answer was, "You could issue debt again in 2019, and you could issue enough to build the aquatic center." So, as long as your sales tax don't crater, we've got 17 million there just because you've got some inflationary impacts there. So, you'd be moving it out. But it'd be paid off in 2033, and the debt is designed so that in 2025, your payments are going to escalate, where you have more room, so your other 4B bond programs start rolling off. So, there would be additional debt. So, you could build your multi-generational recreation center with geo bond debt and come back in three years and find your aquatic center with 4B funds. The operation of the aquatic center, though, would still need to be from your general. I don't think your 4B fund could handle it, unless you have a lot of growth in sales tax that I'm only slightly aware of that you might have.
I know that this may be kind of a little bit hard to answer, and I don't know if we got enough answers, but would there be any substantial savings as opposed to building one, then coming back and building phase two? Would there be any substantial savings into building it all with the aquatic center and everything all at one time?
Yeah, certainly there's savings. I mean, your cost, your inflationary cost to construction is steep about.
So.
Yeah, I mean, what's the construction cost of inflation now? 45%? 5%? So, certainly, yeah, you're going to save some money if you do it now. We would want to design it in total, so you'd have the design, but then, yes, I mean, it's going to cost you more to put it off the triggers.
Mr. Ty Franklin, if this were to happen, just the rec center?
At this point, the way it's planned, it'd be one of the first projects we would do.
So, that would go in sale when?
That would, so we would, if the bond program is approved in November of 2015, you would have your first sale in the spring of 2015. And so, that would probably be enough money for, to do the total design, and then you would have a second sale in 2017 for construction. So, it'd be two years. And with that, I know David's getting worried, we would do Timberbrook Neighborhood also. So, those would be the top two programs.
Got a project manager for all that now, don't they? Got a project manager for all that, too, so we can probably, like, put five or six things going all at once.
Thank you, council.
It's true.
So, if you go to the last slide, what we're going to be asking from you tonight is for direction, and this is your last night to make this decision. We have to call the election as of today, or we can hold a special election. We'd have about another week.
Given to the 24th.
Yeah, we'd have another week, but I'm going to have to gather you all back in a special meeting, and I don't know if you probably want to come back. So, we do need the direction tonight. Again, you have three options. You have no aquatic facility, you have aquatic facility as part of parks and recreation, and you have aquatic facility as a standalone. The standalone has the benefit that the voters decide. It's carved out, as you said, councilman, they can see what they're voting for, and they can see that additional cost. The one problem with it, it could pass and the rest of it could fail, but again, you just wouldn't issue the debt.
Our time on that one specifically, for that reason.
For that reason.
That are worried that people will go, "Well, I got two aquatic, or two rec things. I'm just going to pick one."
And that could happen, absolutely.
Either way.
Yeah, that concerns me.
They take the lowest number. Who knows?
Maybe you'll remember when we had a 4B election and the projects all passed, and the funding mechanism failed.
There were 20, 20 projects, all of them passed with a good margin. Then there was a separate deal, thank you, AG's office, Secretary of State, whoever it was, said, "There's going to be a separate vote to approve a tax." The tax got voted down.
Yes, that did happen to us.
I think, was there any more that did that after that? I don't think there was.
Well, in actuality, I have a city now that's going to do the same thing. They're going to call a sales tax election, but they have to have a separate proposition for a specific project, for, they're going to do a 4B project, a 4A, and yes, you do have to vote it into your propositions, and they're worried about the same thing.
Yeah.
They should give us a call.
And they didn't, it wasn't like it just squeaked by on the, on the project, so. Okay, is there any questions about the other parts of the bond program that's coming out? We're just down to the aquatic deal, basically.
Down to the brass back.
Okay. What do y'all need tonight? What do we need to do back here?
Really, all I need is a vote out, do your regular agenda, and you need to select which ordinance you want to pass. You've got three options.
Would it, could it be specified that if, just like our concern, if the aquatic standalone passes, and the other one, now, I guess.
The option is, we just don't spend that money.
Well, I understand that, but to let the voters know that when they're making that decision.
We can do education, and we could try to.
Up on the ballot, there's no way.
There's no way on the ballot, that's what Julie asked, and she was told no. That's a contingent proposition, and you cannot do it. So, just, so you know some summary information. So, if you did the parks and recreation aquatic together, that's 52.9 million. So, out of a $135 million program, that's about 39% of your projects would be park and rec. You would still have 53% as streets and about, close to 8% for public safety.
What's the streets and the. What's the other one with the?
So, I'd have to remove the 13 million, so we've dropped down to 30%.
Do we have an idea, Steve, what if we were to not build them together? You said that it would be a little bit more expensive to, to build the aquatic facility a year or two later. How much more?
Cost of construction, inflation, it's probably about 5% per year. I mean, with the hot market, it's been really.
Plus the design, once you get into that point, is making sure that what you're designing today or next year is built so that you can, that you can tie in the aquatic side, which is not a major issue.
But that would be in the design.
That'd be in this design.
Okay.
And when you just told us that 4B would, would pay for it in 2019, that's considering D's increases.
Just the best. Right.
That's why we don't.
But it bumps it to 17?
That's, yeah, that's what we do. Based on $17 million per break.
Thank you for the research. Appreciate it, David.
What's going to be the other pressure on 4B coming, you know, down the line?
What's gonna be the other pressure on 4B coming, you know, down the line?
One is your nature center. And you remember in your 15, 16 budget, we did transfer 5 million, uh, from your fund balance to your nature center project. So, um, you then need to, what we've, what we've told, uh, the, uh, groups related to the nature center is it's a $10 million program. Uh, and so you gotta fund the additional 5 million, which I think you can do over through the period if sales tax stays healthy like it has been. Autobahn, that's what I think of Autobahn.
The only thing about the 4B is though, to do that, we almost mean we're not gonna put it on the ballot now. And I think that would be a mistake to not put it on the ballot now. And if it does go on the ballot and gets voted down, then we probably would not wanna come back and do 4B after the voters turn it down anyway.
If it gets voted down, there are new law passed, last legislative session.
Three years?
So if it gets voted down, you cannot bring it back for three years.
For a vote?
For a CO, for a CO. For a CO.
Right.
So you can't, you can't take it to the voters, the voters vote it down, and then the next year you decide to sell COs against your 4B. You couldn't do that for three years.
Where would the, uh, 4B money include in that? Where's that, is that part of that, three years?
I think you could likely issue 4B revenue bonds, but that's typically not how you issue 4B debt here.
Yeah, and touch more money.
As a certificate of obligation and then you just have the 4B pay the debt service for it. And what the new law says is that if you held an election for a prop, for a purpose, if that's voted down, you may not issue COs for the same purpose within three years.
So really, the only way we would do 4B is if we didn't give the voters a chance to vote on it now? Okay.
Or you wait three years. I mean, you could take it to the voters, the voters vote it down, and you wait three years. But the voters have told you no.
Right.
I mean, that's always an issue.
Anything else for the, this part of the workshop? Okay, I'm going to the discussion of the regular hearing, regular agenda. Number one, public hearing.
It's your board, uh, public hearing on your budget and tax rate.
Number two, public hearing.
This public hearing relates to, uh, taking in, uh, over a number of, uh, prior meetings. We've dealt with, uh, burnt track, uh, being, uh, added to your Council Hills Districts, your water districts. This is actually a public hearing, uh, including that property in your public improvement district for shit.
Number three, consent agenda. Number four. Number five, still on consent. Six.
Mayor, um, on item five, uh, this is a significant change to your Valley Bridge Boulevard project. David, why don't you explain to council exactly what drove this cost?
Back in the, uh, 1980s or 90s, uh, property, uh, north of College Street, uh, between College Street and Prairie Creek was planted and the rite of play for Valley Bridge Boulevard was dedicated at that time. So it was dedicated by plan, it wasn't, we didn't go off and buy the rite of play like we do in, in a lot of cases. So, um, we had dedicated rite of play. Back in the, uh, 50s and 60s, uh, this area had a lot of excavation for gravel and sand. Uh, it was filled in after that. And, uh, you know, obviously there was some knowledge of that and there was some geotechnical testing done. Uh, and we did discover, uh, some, uh, concrete and asphalt type debris, uh, in the rite of play area. So we did actually budget, uh, plan for some amount of removal for some of that asphalt and, and concrete. What's kind of unusual about this is that, uh, as you get further away from the creek and closer to College Street, contractor, uh, started running into, uh, a lot of, uh, organic, uh, tree limbs, lumber, uh, the kind of things that, I mean, you don't really want chunks of concrete and asphalt under your road, but you really don't want tree limbs and lumber. So, uh, and, and, and that debris unfortunately was not discovered during the, uh, geotechnical investigation. Uh, and the real, only real explanation to that is, is that, you know, we tend to do a more intense investigation, especially when you're close to the creek because of the bridge and, and doing the deep bores. Uh, but as you get further away from the creek, generally you don't have these types of issues. Well, in this case, it was almost a reverse where the worst debris was actually further away from the creek as you get closer to College Street. So, uh, anyway, uh, to make a long story short, we started excavating for the road and, uh, started uncovering all this, uh, lumber and, and tree limbs and rebar and.
Basically a dumping ground, that's what it was.
And, uh, of course, all that has to be hauled off somewhere, you can't just leave it there. So then we ran into fees, uh, having to haul it to, uh, waste management landfill. Of course, before they would even accept it, it all had to be tested, uh, for, you know. So, uh, there, there were a lot of costs associated with excavating this debris, uh, and being able to take it to the landfill. Uh, and, uh, the amount, uh, was probably five or six times more than, than what was originally anticipated. So, uh, you know, fortunately, uh, we were able to work, uh, pretty closely with our contractor. Jeff did a lot of this. We were able to work out something with our contractor where a lot of the, uh, concrete and asphalt simply pulverized and recompacted rather than hauled to the landfill, which saved a little bit of money. And, uh, so we were able to limit the amount of debris that we had to haul to the landfill. But at the end of the day, uh, with all the testing and hauling and, uh, extra excavation and fill material that we're gonna have to use, uh, it's about a $2.4 million change order.
Significant impact to the project and, uh, we've talked to John Polster with ITS and he does believe that he may be able to get additional RTR funding, uh, to cover this cost. We won't know about that for sure for, I don't know, a couple more months before it's confirmed.
Four months before we know that.
He was fairly confident we'd be able to do it. In the meantime, uh, we've looked at other projects. We've looked at balances from other street projects that we think we can transfer. We've also looked at, uh, the Northeast Old Town Project, delaying that until we have funds available, uh, for this project. Obviously, this project's underway, it has to be finished. There was really not anything, uh, any other way to deal with it but to move forward. And David, uh, his staff really did, Jeff did a very, very good job in managing this 'cause my original estimates were over 3 million. So they did a good job getting these costs down, but it's still significant.
Anything we could do in the future or anything, or any way to determine this?
Yeah, it's difficult, it's difficult, councilman. Now, one thing David and I've talked about is certainly you've got your corporate, uh, extension and we have some concerns that we might run into similar issues. So we're gonna do much more extensive, uh, core sampling, boring. So, uh, that's really all you can do, more geotechnical testing. Way more than you would normally do for any type of project, road project.
And like anything, uh, when, when you do these bores, uh, you know, and I've seen this happen, uh, you know, you can do your bore and then maybe 50 feet away, you know, if you would've done your bore 50 feet over, you would've found something. But, but because it was 50 feet one way or the other, you didn't find it. So, uh, you know, you've always got that, uh, variable. But as, uh, the city manager indicated, anytime, uh, moving forward on these types of projects will be going through, you know, what I would consider urgent territory, uh, you know, undeveloped property. You know, we were going to increase the amount of, uh, geotechnical testing, uh, in an attempt to, uh, try to find these spots, uh, at the front. Now, that's not going to keep us, uh, from, uh, having to excavate it, pay to have it removed, get it hauled off. Uh, but it's.
At least we know that upfront.
Yeah, it's a lot better to know about it upfront rather than have to come back later and say, well, we, all this was here.
Is there any questions from the council? Comments? Item number six. Continuing on consent, item seven.
Uh, back on item six, the, uh, what part, what phase is the, the lift station part of?
It's the second phase, I believe, David, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, the drainage lift station.
Isn't it the second phase?
Second phase.
Yeah, the, the project is, no, I'm sorry, that would be the, the third phase. The second phase is actually the bridge construction, railroad bridge, and then the third phase is the roadway and the lift station.
It's been a very lengthy project, I'm sure councilman, it's one of your asking the question, this started in 2010. So anytime you deal with a railroad, you have lots of obstacles.
So there? Okay. Uh, item number seven. Consent, item eight.
How effective is that copper ion generator as far as the muscles are concerned? Do we have any?
I'll let Carol answer that question, I hope it's very effective.
It's very effective, it's almost, uh, 100% kill on the zebra muscles. And, uh, the big advantage is there's no chemicals involved. A lot, a lot of people look at NASA, actually used it first, and, uh, some of your other, uh, industries are using it as well. And it's, uh, it's very, a very simple process. Much more cost effective and, and has a very high kill rate.
Thank you. I just learned the zebra muscles are in space too.
Oh, yeah?
We took a wet there.
Astronauts, yeah.
Astronauts, yeah, in their suits and then like Lewis.
Item nine. Ten. And the last item on consent, eleven.
Have any ideas on what we're gonna do with this, other than just let it sit there and have to mow it?
Your Overlake District will tell us a lot. And, you know, you approved that, uh, professional services agreement, a prior meeting. So certainly, uh, what would be envisioned would be for instance?
Regular hearing, item twelve.
Again, this, uh, this item, uh, relates to the burnt track that again, we've been dealing with over several different council meetings. And this is a disannexation of what was the five foot strip around, excuse me, boundary around the districts. Thank you.
Okay. Item thirteen.
This again is the burnt track. This is creating the new boundary.
Okay, item fourteen.
This is the resolution, uh, that would approve the pit based on the public hearing.
Okay, item fifteen.
Bond election or you need to select, select one of those ordinances.
Back on the pit, we're still in that language, it says, uh, increase the evaluation of the pit.
They're not, yes, they're not going to, uh, increase the authorization. The authorization is, that has to be voted, and so there's been no vote to increase that.
Item fifteen. Item sixteen. Item seventeen, 901 District.
We did receive, I did get a call from Sue Tramell, I think it is. Uh, and she thanked you all for your nomination, nominated her, and respectfully requested you consider her for, uh, to vote her.
And she was gonna be here tonight, but she has?
She had three other cities that were on her list, so.
Three other cities more important than us.
No, not exactly, it's all.
Probably closer to her house. That's what I would look at.
She thanked you for the nomination and requested that you consider her to vote.
Oh, okay.
She chose other cities to be good.
No, okay.
That's fine.
That's it? Anybody have anything else they wanna add right now? Okay. Reconvene, it's seven o'clock in the council chamber. Yeah, seven o'clock. Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. First item of business is invocation by myself and, uh, the pledge to the American and Texas flags by Councilman Daniels. Could you join me in a moment of silence, please? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Can't even see over the.
I feel like a munchkin.
Okay, P too.
Here's how I tell, if I can smash my knuckles, then it's tall enough.
I cannot do that.
Please call down the representative from the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society.
Yeah.
Have proclamation, whereas the blood cancer is currently affecting with.
...by the City Council at the Budget Workshop. The second and final public hearing will be held on September fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, at seven P. M. And the agenda item is to adopt the budget, property tax revenue increase, and property tax rate will be at the September twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, City Council meeting. Recommendation is that the City Council conduct the public hearing. Councilman Daniels? Do you have any comments on this? First of all, first, excuse me, this is a public hearing. Is anybody here to speak on this? Okay. You have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
You have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Daniels, a second by Councilman Tierney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, public hearing, consideration of advisability of improvements in the proposed addition of approximately thirty-three point two-eight acres of land to Louisville Castle Hills, PID number seven. Administrative comments: Notice of this hearing was published in the newspaper and included the estimated cost of the improvements, boundaries of the proposed district, proposed method of assessment, and the proposed apportionment of costs between the improvement district and the city. Recommendation is that the City Council conduct a public hearing. I do have two to speak on this, if there's any questions. Drew Keith and Jonathan Crans. Council, have any questions with them? Okay. Councilman Tierney, you have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Tierney, second by Councilman Gilmore. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is visitor, citizens forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Did we have anything on this? Okay. We don't have any items on this. Next up is consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the City Secretary. Councilman Gilmore?
Moved to approve as written.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Gilmore, a second by Councilman Ferguson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And now we'll go to... Item twelve, regular hearings. Consideration of an ordinance de annexing point one-three-four acre of land as requested by the landowner, C. H. P. H. Nine L. L. C. Administrative comments: On June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, the owner of approximately point one-three-four acres within the city filed a petition requesting the disannexation of the property. The city is authorized by law to do so. Recommendation is that City Council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption. And they do have Drew Keith and Jonathan Crans to speak on this if, if there are questions they have. Okay. Councilman Ferguson?
Moved to approve as presented.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, providing the disannexation from the corporate boundaries of the City of Louisville of that certain point one-three-four acre tract of land described herein pursuant to the petition for disannexation by C. H. P. H. Nine L. L. C., a Texas Limited Liability Company containing certain findings, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item thirteen, consideration of an ordinance annexing point four-one-eight acres tract of land as requested by the landowner, C. H. P. H. Nine L. L. C., and approving a service plan. On June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, the owner of approximately point four-one-eight acres within the ETJ of the city filed a petition requesting annexation of the property. All notice and public hearing requirements have been satisfied, and a service plan for the annexed area has been made available for public inspection and explained at the public hearing. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption previously read. We do have two cards on this. Drew Keith and Jonathan Crans, if there's any questions, they are available. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the proposed ordinance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Vaughn to approve, and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, annexing a certain point four-one-eight acre tract of land generally located east of Stan Ridge Drive, north of Hebron Parkway, west of Swan Forest Drive, and south of Sur Tris Tram Lane, and more specifically described in Exhibit A attached here too, which is adjacent and contiguous territory to the City of Louisville, Texas, finding that all necessary and required legal conditions have been satisfied, providing that such area shall become a part of the city and that the owners and inhabitants thereof shall be entitled to the rights and privileges of other citizens and be bound by the acts and ordinances now in effect and to be here and after adopted, providing a service plan, approving a service plan, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item fourteen, consideration of resolution for the adoption of approximately, excuse me, the addition of approximately thirty-three point two-eight acres of land to Louisville Castle Hills, PID number seven. A public hearing related to the advisability of the addition of approximately thirty-three point two-eight acres of land to Louisville Castle Hills, PID number seven, and proposed improvements was held earlier at this meeting. If the council, City Council believes it is advisable to expand the district to provide the designated public improvements, the proposed resolution should be approved. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the resolution as set forth in the caption above. And we do have the same two folks, Drew Keith and Jonathan Crans, if there's any questions. Councilman Daniels?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Daniels. Was it Councilman Gilmore? Was that you? Okay. Councilman Gilmore, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item fifteen, consideration of an ordinance calling for a bond election to be held on November third, two thousand fifteen. Administrative comments: Staff has prepared an ordinance options for deliberation. One is an ordinance that includes all previously discussed bond projects, including an aquatics facility as part of a multi-generational recreation center overall facility. Two, an ordinance that excludes the aquatics facility. And three, an ordinance that separates the aquatics facility as a standalone proposition, resulting in a total of four items: public safety parks, recreation, streets, and aquatic facility. Recommendation is that the City Council select and approve an election ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, after we discussed this at quite some length, I'm going to be in favor, and I don't know how we need to state this motion. I think we're all in agreeance except for the, what we need to determine is the multi-generational rec center slash aquatic facility and how we're going to handle that.
I think we're down to the aquatic center.
That's the only thing that we're calling for tonight.
Well, I know, that's, I think that's what we're down to on everything else. I think the council was in agreement with that. You have any comments, City Manager?
Just gonna say, if you could just give us direction on whether or not you want the aquatics facility not included, included in the park and recreation proposition, or included as a fourth item. Those are your three options.
I'm going to be in favor of separating the aquatics facility and allowing the voters to vote on that as its own individual center. And other, if not that, my, my second option would be not to have that on the ballot at all, and look forward to doing that potentially. Strike that. I'm in favor of option three and having that item separated on the ballot.
Okay.
Second.
Was that a?
That's a motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Tierney, a second by Councilman Vaughn to go with the item three. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gilmore?
Yeah, Mayor, I've, I've been chewing on this one for a while, and it's the, the operations cost of, of an aquatic center. What I also, the other side of this is I don't, I, I feel that splitting the rec center into a multi-generational center and a water center on the ballot is going to create an opportunity to not get the multi-generational center. I think it's gonna create some confusion, and it's gonna draw votes, so I'm really not in favor of splitting it. The residents I did talk with have an interest in seeing it, the two thousand twenty-five plan has an interest in seeing it, and so even with my hesitation and reservations on the operations side, I'd rather see this bundled as one, so we have three ordinance or three requests, one for streets, one for multi-generational with aquatics, and one for our police and fire service piece. That, that's my preference.
Okay.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
That's kind of the exact same reason why I want it separated. I, I, I'm just, I'm in fear of, by bundling it together, that we may risk losing the multi-generational rec center.
All together.
All together.
Okay. Councilman Daniels?
I think I'm in agreement with Councilman Tierney. I think it should be separated out, let the voters decide. Everything I've heard, I think everybody's very positive about it, and I think that most of the citizens want it, but I think it should be left up to them to vote whether they want it or not. And I do think it's probably a flip of the coin on whether it'll hurt or help the multi-generational center, but I'm gonna be in agreement with Greg on this one. Councilman Tierney?
Okay. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, Mayor, I'm also in agreement with Councilman Tierney on this one. I think you give the voters the choice. There's, there's no perfect answer here. I wish there were, otherwise we probably wouldn't even be discussing this. Not including it means we've made up our mind that nobody's gonna get that choice, the public won't get that choice, so I'm not in favor of that option. Bundling it runs the risk of losing maybe and bathwater, and so I'm not in favor of bundling it. There's a certain risk involved in offering them as separate items in that someone, depending on their level of understanding of what's going on, may say, well, I'd like the aquatic center, but I don't wish to have the, the rest of the rec center done. I think that risk is relatively small, but I think it's a risk that I'm willing to accept. So I'm going to go with Councilman Tierney's recommendation.
Okay. Councilman Vaughn, you have any comments?
Basically, Mayor, I've already stated what I had to do, I say, in the workshop, and I'm in support of the aquatic facility as a standalone proposition, and I voiced my support of that when I seconded the motion of Councilman Tierney.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Vaughn. We do have a motion on the floor for item, for, to number three. I would like to see us have a united front on this if we could, just because we need to get moving forward on something on it. So we'll call the vote now.
Mayor?
Oh, excuse me, Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, calling a bond election to be held within the city, making provisions for the conduct of the election and other provisions related thereto.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item sixteen is consideration of a final plat of Castle Hills section, excuse me, S. E. C. J. W. H. addition, a twelve-point-nine-nine acre parcel designated general business two and light industrial located on the southeast corner of Josie and Windhaven Parkway, with one associated variance as requested by Land Design Inc. representing the property owner. Administrative comments: The subject plat is located within Castle Hills in the city's ETJ and is for future commercial development. The variance requested by the owner is to allow dedication of street drainage, pedestrian easements in lieu of right-of-way dedication for a right-turn lane along Josie Lane and deceleration lanes at Windhaven Parkway. P. N. Z. recommended approval for O. at its August fourth, two thousand fifteen, meeting. Recommendation is that City Council approve the final plat and the variance as set forth in the caption above. And we do have Drew Keith here, just, is in support of this and is available for questions. Councilman Gilmore?
Moved to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Councilman Gilmore as presented, and a second by Councilman Ferguson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item seventeen, consideration of a resolution appointing one member to the Board of Managers of Denko Area nine-one-one District. Administrative comments: At the June fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, City Council's selection, selected Sue Tummel, Mayor of Copper Canyon, as the city's nomination for the Board of Managers of Denko nine-one-one. All the nominations have now been submitted for the area cities, and each participating city must vote for one of the candidates. Recommendation is that the City Council approve resolution as set forth above. Councilman Ferguson?
I move that we approve Sue Tummel as our nominee, or, for the, sorry, approve Sue Tummel for the Board of Managers of Denko nine-one-one.
To cast our votes, is that what we do?
Cast our votes.
Okay. Okay. So, a motion by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Gilmore. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Reports. Nika? Okay, Vaughn? Thank you. Okay. Got a new person here. Okay, good to see you. Russ?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind everybody that next Monday, school will resume back for the fall term, so obviously the school zones will be in the forest both in the morning and afternoon. And we also like to remind motorists that most, a lot, a lot of people will begin taking children to school during that first week or so that normally will not do that, so traffic will be a little bit congested, take some extra time to get to where you need to if you're gonna travel to the school zone, and be sure to slow down. Thank you.
Thank you. Russ, on one question on that, is, has there been very many changes in the hours of the speed of the school zones that you're aware of?
No, so they've been pretty static for the last three or four years.
Okay. Thank you. Water? Still have plenty?
It's only about three and a half feet over conservation, so it's, we're getting back to normal.
Okay. Thank you. Gina? James?
As councilors are aware, today was a momentous day for Lila Nature Preserve, as the city assumed gate operations at that facility, and is now open seven days a week, and the admission charge is now per vehicle instead of per person, which is more affordable for families, obviously. And on the communication side, we are trying to get the word out to people, let them know that this two-thousand-acre urban wilderness is more accessible to them than it has ever been, that the activities and facilities at Lila are available seven days a week when they have not been in the past. You might have noticed that the billboards around town have the "now open" wording added to them. We've been working with Bob's staff in Parks and also with the Lila staff in U. N. T. to get the word out through a lot of different outlets. One of those is a media tour that we are holding a week from Wednesday, that'll be Wednesday, the twenty-sixth. We'll have a little bit continental breakfast at eight, we'll do the tour from nine to eleven, and take our local media representatives around to see some of the facilities and some of the highlights at Lila, some of the places where five hundred and eighty different animal and, and bird species have been spotted, and hopefully that'll put Lila in the front of mind for them as they do future coverage. We've already heard back from several outlets, TV and print, who do plan to attend. There should be an invitation headed your way as well, should've gone out, but I better make sure of that, but we'd love to have you join us also for it.
Okay. Thank you. Gina, you have?
Yes. Council, I have a couple announcements. First one is, I wanted to just cover the event that took place on Saturday through Development Services, the Clear the Shelter Program. Amazing statistics, this is a national program that we participate in and also regional. The stats I have are, on Saturday, nationwide, seventeen thousand six hundred animals were adopted. North Texas, two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one animals were adopted, leaving eleven shelter, adopt, zero pets to adopt, eleven shelters. Louisville had five hundred residents visit the shelter, we had seventy adoptions leaving the shelter with two dogs and six cats. I think that's something to be really proud of, it's an excellent program. Second part of that is Neighborhood Services is hosting a Neighborhood Leader, Neighborhood Leading Neighbors series at the City Hall at the Annex, and it'll be in the community room at six-thirty on Thursday night, in its regards to maintaining your property and the property maintenance codes, and we'll have building code division and code enforcement in attendance.
Okay. Thank you. Steve? Daniels?
Okay, I think we've gone forty days now without rain, so with that, one of the things that is coming up on Thursday, September tenth, Keep Louisville Beautiful, is having a keyhole gardening class at the Louisville Annex, so, in the Annex Room. So, if you don't know what keyhole gardening is, it's basically raised garden beds that were started in Africa, they're very drought tolerant, and they're very water efficient, so when you have a place like this, it goes forty days without rain, it's a great way to garden in Texas, so try to make it to that class Thursday, September tenth.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Tierney?
Nope.
Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, we've got Western Days coming up, and for those of you who wish to participate in the parade, which I think is a phenomenal tradition here in Louisville, you can sign up and get your certificate in, so you get a place in the parade. You can go to LouisvilleWesternDays.com, just click on Parade, and the information will be there.
Okay. Thank you. City Manager, no comment about the animal shelter?
I'm thrilled about the animal shelter. I didn't attend on Saturday, because you know, there would not be two dogs allowed, they would be at my home right now.
It was pretty good.
Councilman Ferguson?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to congratulate Animal Services. I know five hundred people coming through in a matter of a few hours and adopting out all those pets and all that paperwork, that's just a monumental level of effort, and also thank all the volunteers who helped make that happen, because without the two of them, it would've never had, had the day. A little extra note, Russ, regarding school zones, keep in mind, keep your cellphone off, so keep it out of your hands and put it away. MCL Grand, we have Healthy You is doing a session on August twenty-fifth, that's very relevant to back-to-school, which is pediatrics and back-to-school, and that's at the MCL Grand. The Visual Arts League always has Friday night jam, so if you haven't gone yet, you haven't been listening to me, but you better get out there and go see it, it's a great time, it's free, some amazing people and, and talent that show up for those events, and it's a lot of fun. Art Exhibits, we have as above, so below, this is an exhibit by six U. N. T. students, and it runs from a couple of days ago through September nineteenth in the gallery, main gallery, and we also have a Vow exhibit, Photography Altered Processes, and that started a couple of days ago, and will also run through September nineteenth, and that's in the North Corridor Gallery, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Vaughn?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Counselor? City Secretary, Officer, thank you for your service to the community, along with all the other officers and police department employees. Thank you. Next item is closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D., Item One, Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, Legal Issues Related to the Construction of Old Town Park Plaza, Two, Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, Pending Litigation, City of Louisville versus City of Farmers Branch and Camelot Landfill, Clause Number Four, twelve-dash-CV-dash-zero-zero-seven-eight-two, U. S. District Court for the Eastern District of Texas, Sherman Division, T. C. EQ Modification to Municipal Solid Waste Permit Number one-three-one-two-A, and T. C. U., T. C. EQ Application to Obtain Municipal Solid Waste Permit Amendment, Permit Number one-three-one-two-B. Item Three, Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, Property Acquisition. Item Four, Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, Personnel, Annual Staff Reviews, First City Manager Donna Barron, Two, Julie, City Secretary Julie Heinze, Three, City Attorney Elizabeth Plaster, Four, Chief Municipal Court Judge Brian Holman, and Five, Alternate Municipal Court Judges. Five, Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven, Economic Development Deliberations Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. Reconvene the meeting. Is there any action to be taken?
Yes, Mayor, I move to settle all claims with J. C. Commercial Incorporated to close out the Old Town Plaza project by paying J. C. Commercial Incorporated three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and keeping all other remaining funds contingent upon Item One, J. C.'s Commercial turning over all marked set of as-built plans, showing modifications made to the original plans, and Item Two, J. C. Commercial Incorporated providing the following to the city: granite pavers, ADA ramps, limestone pavers, handrails, OTP-dash-E signage, and LED for the Wayne Ferguson Plaza wall, and to authorize the city manager or her designee and the city attorney or her designee to sign any necessary documents.
Second.
Said you, Greg?
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, a second by Councilman Tierney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.